To order and open the meeting, I would also like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of building practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. And the staff are going to be quiet very soon. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the prayer of council, which will be read by Reverend Bruce Hammond from the Liverpool Presbyterian Church, if you could all be up. Okay, we have no apologies. We do have a condolence motion. Tonight, we pause to remember Iris May Wallace, former president of the City of Liverpool and District Historical Society, and I knew her very, very well personally. Mrs. Wallace was born on the 10th of August, 1927, and she married Keith, deceased, for 52 years. She was a beloved mum and mother-in-law to Julian Joseph, and nan to Alison, John and Pauline, and Timothy, and nanny Iris, great-grandma to Cohen, Isla, and Alicia and Sienna. Mrs. Wallace was a stalwart of the City of Liverpool Historical Society during the 80s and 90s, and held many positions on the committee, including president. Due to the hard work of the volunteers like her, the Liverpool City District and Historical Society was awarded the Order of the City of Liverpool in 2008. Mrs. Wallace was also founding member of the Liverpool Volunteer Resource Centre. She was known as Nana Iris to a generation of students at Cassula Public School as a volunteer through the Grand Friends Programme that ran in the early 2000s. Her family members have remembered her as special auntie to all her nieces and nephews, a loyal friend and exceptional colleague to many, and a fighter to the end. Mrs. Wallace was truly a prolific and energetic volunteer who gave up much of her time to help those in need in the Liverpool community. She passed away on the 7th of April, 2021, aged 93. A recreant mass for the eternal repose of Iris Wallace's soul was held at the Lady of Mount Carmel Catholic Church at Verreville on Friday, the 16th of April. Following the service, Mrs. Wallace was laid to rest at Forest Lawn Memorial Park, Levington. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I express my deepest condolences to Iris Wallace's family and friends during this difficult time. May she rest in peace. I move that we write to the family of Iris Wallace to express our condolences for their loss. Seconded, thank you in many places, those for, those against, carried. If we could be upstanding for a minute's silence. All right, the next item on the agenda is confirmation of the previous minutes.
Exactly. Thank you, my honour.
Thank you, councillor Shelton.
I'll second, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Arpidid. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Declarations of interest.
Yes, madam mayor.
Just a... Councillor Chitty, you've got the call.
Yeah, Conf O3, there are people on that list that are known to me through the course of being in Liverpool, non-percurnary, less than significant. Egro 06, same, people are known to me through the normal course of business, non-percurnary, less than significant.
Thank you, councillor Harrow.
Yes, madam mayor, I have Egro 06 as well, non-percurnary, I believe, less than significant, family living in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? That's all, thank you. We now are moving into the public forum. Our first presenter is Mr. Philip Nolan, who will... Next item is Meryl Minnet. I believe you will have a copy. This year marks 30 years since the opening of Wattle Grove, a much-loved suburb in the city of Liverpool. Wattle Grove was officially opened on the 12th of April, 1991, by the then Prime Minister of Australia, the Honourable R.J.L. Bob Hawke. At the ceremony, Mr. Hawke presented keys to the first four service homes who had been relocated to the adjacent Holsworthy Village to occupy their new homes in the Wattle Grove development. The suburb was originally designed for 8,000 people with a village atmosphere. 2,000 lots of various housing types were progressively released in the early 90s. One-third was dedicated to housing service families, and the rest were sold for private housing. Wattle Grove was considered by the Defence Housing Authority as its flagship development, and the authority asserted that Wattle Grove had been recognised as setting the standard for planning communities in Sydney. The development of Wattle Grove was awarded the 1991 Special Award for Excellence by Liverpool City Council. An artificial lake, known as the Wattle Grove Lake, was opened in March, 1993, surrounded by parklands. Wattle Grove Lake was the centrepiece of the new suburb. The lake is still well-used by the residents of Wattle Grove and the surrounding area today. Wattle Grove Shopping Centre and the council-run Wattle Grove Community Centre were subsequently built. They are great facilities, contributing to the continued livability of Wattle Grove. The Wattle Grove development created a close-knit, caring community, which is a very positive part of Liverpool. I would like to thank the City of Liverpool and the District Historical Society for bringing to our attention, or my attention, the significant occasions for the city of Liverpool. I formally move that the council acknowledges the 30th anniversary of the suburb of Wattle Grove. Those for the motion, those against, declared carried. Thank you. The next item is COO O1.
Madam Mayor, I have a matter of urgency to be considered.
What is your urgency?
The matter of urgency is a rescission motion, an urgent rescission motion of MOU O1, from the 31st of the 3rd, 2021.
Sorry, try that again.
Urgent rescission of MOU...
I understand that bit, but keep going.
So, would you like me to give the reason for the urgency motion?
I would.
Okay. Madam Mayor, legal advice from the Office of Local Government for the need for councillors to know the facts of the matter and the details, expert reports and professional advice and legal assumptions outlining any possible financial gains or losses for council depending on continuing or not continuing litigation, funding based on the legal assumptions pertaining to the merits of the case, in order for councillors to make an informed decision in the best interest of Liverpool council and our community. Information that was not possible to be presented to councillors when the matter was first before council due to legal privilege and the previous time restraints placed upon council. Revised scopes, these included revised scopes of the litigation and capped amount requested by Ray Moore Bank Inc., revised court date, and the new advised deadline of the court's six-day hearing scheduled 21st to 28th of June, 21.
All right, well, first of all, I'll declare it urgent, and the rescission motion, due to its content, I would move into confidential session of council at the end under section 10A2DI, because it will have financial implications and private information in that. So, I deemed it urgent, and it will be dealt with in confidential at the last item of the council.
Thank you very much, madam mayor.
So, the next item is on page 83.
Happy to move that, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillors.
Second, madam mayor.
No, we got one. So, we've got the two Hs, councillor Harrow and councillor Didd.
Can I just have a quick question, madam mayor?
Yes, certainly, councillor Rhodes.
Madam Mayor, can we confirm that the service providers meet the requirements to connect all departments of council and to create interactive public access to services, call complaints, with a calendar-tracking system that we've talked about frequently in this council, to inform the public when their issue is at, and when it will be dealt with, and how it will be dealt with? Just need confirmation that this particular system is going to be able to do that, because that's one of the biggest things I'm looking forward to.
I'll ask the CEO.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. Can I ask Mr. Lavarrado to common address council, please?
Thank you, councillors. Through the CEO, I think what you're talking about there, councillor, doesn't really get addressed by the CMS itself. The CMS itself is more of a, it sits on top of what those systems would, what you would be proposing that to do. The CMS is more like a overlay that connects a lot of back-end systems to each other. I can certainly have a look at it and take it on notice, but I think that would be a question for the IT team, and linking in their systems in the ongoing review of the technology stack that they're looking at, as opposed to the website itself.
Appreciate that, and happy for it to be taken on notice and given back to all councillors.
Thank you. Is there any speakers for or against the motion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried. Next items on page 87. Councillor Didd moving, seconded by councillor Harrow. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried. Next items on page 100.
Exactly. Thank you, madam mayor.
Councillor Shelton, and seconded by councillor Didd.
Question, madam mayor.
Certainly.
On the design excellence panel, could council ask that the design excellence panel take into consideration a greater emphasis on the island heat sinking effect? And it's been an issue, and I've been on the, sorry, that's the question.
I'll ask the CEO for response.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, the purpose of the DEP is identified on page 239 of the Attachment booklet, so its primary purpose is in relation to the design excellence of a building. Council planners can certainly take into account urban heat-related matters as a relevant consideration under the Planning Act.
In response to that, madam mayor.
Yes, councillor.
I am on the greatest in the West planning panel, as you know, and quite often, the issue comes up with a design such as the colours chosen. And we all know that dark colours contribute to urban heat sinking, and yet, we still have architects that quote, "black buildings, dark grey and charcoal". Those sorts of colours, we all know, contribute negatively to the heat sinking. It also means that you need to use more energy for air conditioning and so on, and it seems to me that the DEP doesn't look at that, because every one of those issues that's come to the planning panel, that's a question I ask, and it doesn't seem to be addressed. So, I respectfully ask that our planning section might put greater emphasis on that. Open space and heat sink is a major problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any speaker? Councillor.
Just a question, how many of these proposed members live in Liverpool?
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I'll ask Mr. Sidham if he has that information, otherwise we may need to take that on notice.
I'll need to take that question on notice, please.
Thank you.
I'll speak in favour of it, just so I can go on a rant. That's, I guess they're making very important decisions about the look and feel of buildings in Liverpool. If we don't know if any of them live in Liverpool, that's pretty disappointing. I actually think when we go out again, we should make that a criteria, for the same reason people are very passionate about when someone runs for council, they should live in Liverpool. You have a vested interest, you care about the community you live in, and you should have a say. There is a building, when you come off the M8, on the left, and it's made out of bricks, and it's very beautiful, and I noticed it, and it came to my, I then saw it after seeing it for the first time, a couple of weeks later, I saw that won an architectural award for design. It's actually social and affordable housing in that suburb, around Tempe, around that area. The thing that disappoints me is that in places like that, you get, you know, buildings that are for social and affordable housing, that are visually appealing, they're very beautiful-looking, and they win design awards. I wonder if how many people on their design excellence panel live in their area. So, I think we can improve the look and feel of some of the buildings in Liverpool, and one of the ways to go about that is to actually have people on the panel that live in Liverpool. That's, yeah, that's my two cents.
Madam Mayor, can I ask?
I have a question.
Hold on, councillor.
In light of councillor Hagerty's comments, maybe that could be added to the charter for next time around.
Mm-hmm, yep, that's fine.
Maybe that could be put into an official motion, so next time around, the people that we are actually voting for are residents.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Are you comfortable with that? Councillors moved and seconded? Councillor Shelton, councillor Didd? Would that be included, that panel members reside in Liverpool for the next panel?
Well, they don't have to reside in Liverpool, but that it's, you know, at least a certain number of them do, or, you know, they're given waiting if they live in Liverpool.
A percentage, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the staff have got the message.
With that wording, would it go into the charter, officially into the charter?
I think the staff have the understanding, and this has been a permanent, well, it's 12-month record in filming, so I think we'll be able to get that to happen, but if the mover and the seconder want that included, then we can include it, and that's councillor Shelton and councillor Didd. Councillor Shelton?
Yeah, I'm happy with the motion the way it stands, thanks.
Thank you. And the secondary result also agrees, so we'll just add that on as an extra point. Okay.
I have a question, madam mayor.
Yes, councillor Rhodes, what's your question?
The question that I have, madam mayor, we can see that they're all architects, which you can understand, but my question is, is there some recognition that would increase these particular companies' financial gain by being on a recognised design excellence panel?
I'll ask the CEO for answer to that.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, I'm not quite sure how to answer that question, and so therefore I won't. It's a very, it's a very difficult question. All I could say to you, councillor Rhodes, is the membership of the DEP under 4.1 of the charter requires the panel to comprise high-level and respected professionals who have been in the design of recent major projects. If there is any conflict of interest in relation to any matters that come before the design excellence panel, the same conflict of interest requirements would apply to those design excellence panel members, and they would recuse themselves from that panel.
I thank council for their response, but that was not answering the question that I put. The question that I put, is there any perceived value to these particular companies for being on a prestigious design excellence panel?
I'll ask the CEO for response.
Councillor Rhodes, I think we'll have to take that on notice. I'm not aware of any advantage that would come to them, but I'm not in a position to confirm that, and I think...
Happy for the council to take it on notice and bring it back to council.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I also have a question.
Yes, councillor Kelly Endall.
So, when these applications are being assessed, what consideration is given to the diversity of the panel?
Through the CEO.
Could I ask Mr. Smith?
Apologies for that. Are you able to repeat the question?
Sure. My question was, when these applications are being assessed, to determine the final recommendations, what consideration is given to the diversity of the panel?
I'll ask, through the CEO, I'll ask Mr. Sidham to answer that question, thank you.
So, the panel comprises of architects, landscape architects, and urban designers, so we have a broad range of disciplines. So, the landscape architects have a very good understanding of the public domain, whilst the architects more so of the built form, and the urban designers more broadly. And so, we've ensured that we've got a spread of all of them on the panel, on the shortlisted members of the panel.
Thank you. I guess I was sort of asking about the diversity in terms of, you know, mix of people from different backgrounds, different genders, that sort of thing. So, whilst the professional mix, I think there's a requirement within the charter for different professionals to be on the panel, what sort of other types of diversity are looked at?
Through the CEO, I'll take that question, thanks councillor. The, we're guided by what the charter says, so there isn't a diversity in relation to different genders, so the charter specifies who the members of the DEP should be, so I'll just refer you to page 239 of the Attachment booklet. There are some discussions tonight, we are reviewing the charter again next year, so the charter is due for renewal in 2022. So, if the council is minded to amend the charter in the ways that have been considered, we'll certainly consider that when we put the charter up to council in October next year.
Thank you. In that case, can I suggest that we include having a certain number of panel members residing in the Liverpool GA, and also look at the diversity of the panel when the charter is next reviewed as part of number two?
Okay. Is councillor Shelton and councillor Didd happy with it?
Yep.
Yes, why not? Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, queries, whatever? Okay, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried.
Can I be recorded as voting against that, madam mayor?
Yes, certainly, councillor. Next item is on page 105.
Happy to move it, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harrow.
I'll second, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ayad. Any opposition?
I have some questions, madam mayor.
Okay, what are your questions, councillor?
Does council know how many developments would be contributing to the costs of the lights, or the proposed number of developments that would be contributing to the cost of the lights?
Through the CEO.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, through the CEO, thanks for the question, councillor. On page 107 of the agenda, it lists a table of all the developments that will be contributing to that intersection upgrade.
And am I to understand that the construction of the lights will be done after all those developments are done, or some time before?
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, we're planning on finalising the concept and detailed designs later this year, to be in a position in the 2022-23 Capital Works Budget to identify, to do that work. A number of developments are constructed already, there are others that aren't, so there may be a bit of an overlap before that occurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried unanimously for the tightest. Next items on page 114.
Happy to move that after a couple of questions, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. What are your questions?
Madam Mayor, a disappointing feature in the reports, which I thank council for, is the fact that there's no mention to the safety issues regarding the racing precinct. Now, it is a significant issue which is particular to the racing precinct, not the collaboration area, and/or other areas in the collaboration area. And the matter is extremely serious, because, you know, these animals are very expensive, the racehorses, and there is always the ongoing risk of possible injury and even death of these valuable animals, and training staff and horse attenders. Is there any possibility of there being some priority given to the racing precinct, considering those safety issues?
Through the CEO.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, council staff appreciate those concerns. This is a priority for council staff to move forward on. As resolved by council, the draft plans were put on initial consultation to get feedback from the community. What we're recommending is that we re-engage consultants to address as much as possible the concerns that were raised during the community consultation, to identify how we can improve feasibility of development in that area, and potentially reduce the level of development contributions. So, we are working on that as quickly as possible. There are a number of studies that are underway to be able to support the planning proposal, and we are putting a budget request in, in the coming financial year, to be able to fund the additional work that's needed in this area, but it absolutely is a priority of council.
And if I may, one further question, madam mayor.
Yes, councillor.
I'm a little bit, there is a flood evacuation report needed for the collaboration area, am I right?
To the CEO.
That's correct.
Can you tell me what is the combining factor when the flood evacuation for the southern parts of Liverpool would hardly be the same as in the areas such as the racing precinct, because they're in physically different locations? And how can, I would have thought that you would have done the flood evacuation plan for the racing precinct, and then flood evacuation plans for the other parts of the collaboration area, under the planning principles? So, I was a bit confused by that it was a collaboration area flood evacuation plan.
Through the CEO.
Thank you, madam mayor. Mr. Smith again, please.
Yes, thank you. Through the CEO, it's a requirement of the Department of Planning for all planning proposals, not just within the collaboration area, but also in the East Liverpool area, so the Moor Point area and the Moorbank East area, that a comprehensive flood evacuation strategy is done for the entire area, not one for one particular area and one for another area. The primary reason for that is the George's River catchment itself, the road network, so if people are evacuating from one area within Liverpool, and they're likely to be evacuating from other areas in Liverpool, and what needs to be considered is the capacity of the road network if a number of precincts, including the horse training precinct, is required to evacuate, and it is a requirement of DEP that that is undertaken prior to any planning proposals being submitted for gateway.
And does it add, does it affect the priority that we would like to see placed on the racing precinct, considering the safety issues? Do all those flood evacuation plans have to be done? Is there an order of priority for the different sections that have to be done? Could the Warwick Farm Racing Precinct have, again, a priority because of the safety issues?
Through the CEO.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, there is only one flood evacuation plan, not multiple flood evacuation plans, and I'll just draw your attention to 124 of the agenda. It outlines when we believe that will be done, so it's expected to be done in the next two months, in June, 2021. That will then enable this planning proposal to proceed, as well as other planning proposals that council has endorsed, including Moor Point, and for them to be resubmitted to the Department of Planning for a gateway determination.
Happy to move the motion as put, with one amendment, madam mayor, number two.
Moving a motion, councillor, what is it?
As per the book.
Yep.
With an alteration to number two, delegates the necessary funds in the 2021 to 2022 operational plan, if it can't be provided earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Question, mayor?
I just asked, wait a minute, for a second, I'll, thank you, councillor Ayad, yes, question.
Thanks. I thought I heard the director say that some reports are on their way, well on their way. Point two says, are we waiting for the funds in the budget to be allocated before all the reports are on their way? Or have you already started, and then we will allocate funds? allocate funds during the budget process?
I'll ask the CEO to respond.
Thank you Madam Mayor. All of the funding within Mr Smith's area has been expended on this, and we either allocate an additional £150,000 or so now to expedite the work or we wait until the new financial year.
Can I, is it possible then to suggest to the mover and secondor that those are allocated now, so we're not waiting for the budget, given reading the room? Everyone is in support. Instead of waiting two months, we allocate it now when those reports get on their way and then we just save two months. Is that something we can do?
Through the CEO.
Yes, that's right councillor.
Can I ask the mover and secondor to take that in consideration?
Happy to support that.
Thank you.
So the wording would change that the funds be made available at this time?
Thank you.
Fine, okay.
Question?
In this current financial year, yes.
Question?
Yes councillor Haggerty.
So presumably the purpose of that would be to bring it in by, let's say, two months? What timeframe are we, what timeframe were we looking at? What timeframe are we looking at now? And thirdly, what else can we do to bring this in quicker?
Through the CEO.
Mr Smith. Thank you. So the original recommendation was if budget was allocated from 1 July, then we would have gone out to the market. There was a potential to do a tender exemption. We were expecting to then have this done before the end of this year. If we are now having two months earlier, we could then go out to the market relatively quickly, within the month, get responses back and I think a three-month period of time to be able to, for a consultant to consider the 30-odd submissions, I think it was, from the community, the feasibility work is a reasonable time to do that planning work, noting the other studies that are already funded. So that's the flood evacuation, open space study and transport study. They're already funded and they're underway and they'll be done mid-year. So they need to consider those studies. So if they're going to be done mid-year, I would expect, and this is subject to obviously the responses we get back from the market, that if that's done by July, June, July, we could probably get a report back to council when the election's in the way, August or after the election, I guess that's.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Yes councillor Chitty. Hold on, councillor Chitty.
Sorry, just based on that tender exemption, is there a basis for a tender exemption?
Mr Smith.
There would be in relation to if we went to the current people that were doing, so Connie Bear Morrison, who was engaged, if we re-engage them, we would determine whether or not a report would need to come to council or whether the CEO has delegation to do that. We'll take that part on notice. But if we did a tender exemption, that's a possibility.
Can we just give you a tender exemption now if you're using those? Just saves another report, another month of backwards and forwards. Can we just incorporate a tender exemption into this motion?
Through the CEO.
Thank you Madam Mayor. I think if we phrase it in that the CEO consider a tender exemption, I regard it as an extension to an existing piece of work, in which case no exemption would be required.
Okay.
But I would need to just check on that.
Alternatively, there are other ways of making decisions between council meetings.
That's what I'm here for.
Subtle.
Madam Mayor, just one further question, when councillor Haggerty?
Hold on a moment.
I guess what we're trying to do is contract the timeframe. Presumably if we get the same consultants on board, they can hit the ground running, they've got the knowledge. I've been dealing with this for four and a half years now and I want to get it sorted. There are people who've been dealing with this for 20 years. Yeah, we really need to bring this to a head as soon as possible. And when we start talking about timeframes around September, October, November, we're now dealing with, I guess, a third or fourth council, you know, a bunch of councils that have to deal with this. They will have to get up to speed. They may not understand the complexity and details of this issue. So I think, you know.
Yep.
Let's try and speed this up, please.
Okay, well, I think we've got the gist. It was seconded by councillor Ayard for the typist. Okay, any opposition?
Just one question.
Yes councillor.
Thank you. Back on the topic of safety in this racing precinct, is there anything that we can do to draw attention to that issue as it isn't in the report, to bring it to the attention of DEPI? I just feel that it's such a relevant issue in that area and I'm concerned that it isn't in the report. I don't want to hold up things any further, but I would like a greater acknowledgement of the issues around that that is relevant to this particular precinct.
Through the CEO.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Councillor, I see no reason why I couldn't be, why we couldn't insert that into the scope of the additional piece of work, but I'll ask Mr Smith if he can.
Thank you. Through the CEO, what I would suggest is a point four to the resolution that could be worded, that council notes the importance of this piece of work, including in relation to existing safety issues being experienced by horse trainers in the precinct.
So mover and secondor happy with point four? Councillor Rhodes, councillor Ayard?
I'm happy.
I'm fine with that, but does that mean that the bypass road will get moved along? Because I know that's been in the pipeline for quite a while now.
Through the CEO, I'll ask, if you can ask that again.
The whole purpose of the bypass was to keep trainers safe.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you councillor. Mr Smith?
Thank you councillor. And through the CEO, absolutely, the bypass road is identified within the structure plan, so we understand the importance of that. To be able to rezone this precinct, we need to be getting heavy vehicles out of that precinct and onto Governor McQuarrie Drive in the most efficient and safe way possible.
Okay, is there any opposition to this motion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous for the typist. Next item is EGR 05 on page 126.
Happy to move that, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes, councillor Hall. Any opposition?
I'll be voting against it, thanks Madam Mayor.
Sorry councillor Sheldon?
You said, was there any opposition? And I said I'll be voting against it.
Okay, fine. Well, then I'll put it, those in favour and those against, which is councillor Sheldon, declare it carried. Next item is on page 134.
Madam Mayor, could, would you mind repeating that? We were a little bit.
Page 134.
Move that way Mayor.
Thank you councillor Chitty.
Second it, Madam Mayor.
Seconded by councillor Ayard. Is there any opposition?
No, but I have a question, Madam Mayor.
What is your question councillor?
Some time ago, this was also, let me see, looked at by what's called the Hills Economic Study of 2012, I believe, when this came to council the last time. The Grove, we're talking about the mega centre area. There were some issues there at the time and we had a, I believe it was called the Hills Economic Study of the time. I just wondered how it compared, that compared to what we are doing now. Maybe you need to take it on notice and get back to me. Obviously you would, it's a while ago. Thank you.
I think taking it on notice sounds wise. Yes councillor Rhodes? Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, currently unanimous for the typist. Next item is on 148.
Happy to move that way, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Seconded by councillor Didd. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against.
Can that be also recorded as unanimous?
Pardon?
Sorry.
You're right?
Yep.
Okay, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous.
No, thank you.
We're going to have a 10-minute break because one of the councillors tonight has just received some fairly sad family news. Just for 10 minutes, thank you. Homzo 1.
Move that way, thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon, secondor?
Second.
Thank you. Any opposition? Thank you. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item was on page 162.
Move that way, thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon, seconded. Thank you councillor Hall. Any opposition?
Madam Mayor, I'll just vote against it, thank you, and be recorded just doing that.
All right, those in favour, those against, declare it carried with councillor Rhodes voting against it. Next item is on page 170.
Happy to move it.
Thank you councillor Hall, seconded.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Rhodes. Any opposition?
Yeah, I'll be voting against Mayor.
Okay, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, noting councillor Chitty's against, declare it carried. Next item is on page 187.
Motion Madam Mayor.
You have a motion?
Well, I'd like to defer this.
That is your motion to defer?
Yes.
Okay, secondor?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do you like to speak to your motion councillor Hall?
Yes. One of the issues here, this is the nature strip verge mowing policy. I believe it needs a much closer look. It's one of these issues that impinges on the appearance, the presentation of Liverpool. If we currently, if you drive along the main roads, you'll find that the verges are not being cut and, you know, the residents don't do it. And in some instances, there are some very good reasons why they don't. They may not have the ability to do it or the money to do it and so on. And I believe there are ways and means they can get it done, but I think council has some obligation to, towards that. And I think maybe we need to look at our policy and see what we can do to incorporate some of those issues, maybe help them out. Rather than pass it as it is, I think we need to look at and see if we can do more for the residents, including maybe getting some help from the state or federal government towards doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. The second, I wish to speak again for the motion.
Yes, I will speak in support of the motion, Madam Mayor. I agree with councillor Hall. I think one of the most important issues in Liverpool is our presentation of our area. And I believe there is a lot of more opportunities that we could be doing in order to make it better. I'm not beyond looking at possible volunteers to go and assist to keep our city clean and presentable and everything done. So I would like us to be given the opportunity to discuss this further and come up with ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak against the motion of deferral?
I'd just have a question, and this will probably be discussed if I can Mayor.
Yes.
As part of the deferral. A nature strip, obviously in front of someone's property, is owned by council. Given that they can't park on it, you can't do pretty much anything on it, we're now going to bring in a policy that says we're going to send you a letter to mow that grass that you can do nothing except walk on? Is that what I'm understanding here?
Through the CEO.
Thank you Madam Mayor. I think the letter, the correspondence, the intention of that is to seek goodwill, but I'll ask Mr Diplos to expand on that.
Yeah, through the CEO, that's correct. It's goodwill, it's not an enforcement. You know, it's something that's got some legacy and happy to take it on notice and consider it further. And that you know what the implications are if indeed council are to take that on across the entire LGA.
Thank you. Any other points? Yes councillor Haggerty?
Not so much a question, but an idea. I know that, I think councillor Hall mentioned that, you know, there are sort of elderly residents in our area that, you know, can't mow their lawn. It's my understanding that when elderly residents get things like Commonwealth Home Support, they do get a package to cut their grass, except there are no providers or there's a lack of providers in our area to cut the grass. Is it worth exploring whether council could actually be registered as a Commonwealth, or whatever, whether it's Commonwealth Home Support or some other package? And, you know, potentially we could do that and run it cost new choice, not at a profit by getting some money back from the government.
I'm sure that can be looked into, what's possible in regards to the deferral.
Yep, thanks.
Any other issues people wish to raise at this point? Okay, I'll put it, the matter be deferred, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item is committee reports, moving as a whole councillor Didd.
Seconded.
Seconded councillor Hall. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried, moved as a whole. Questions with notice on page 208. Councillor Rhodes?
Thank you Madam Mayor. I thank council for the report and I am grateful that we will be starting our mobile offices in May. And I'm sure that the community will be sighing a sigh of relief because there are so many people within our community that does not have Facebook and doesn't have computer access. And it is so very, very important that council continues to give the community that opportunity to address their issues with council. And the mobile office is a wonderful way of doing that. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Happy with the response.
Thank you. Question two and question three is in the name of councillor Caliander and unfortunately she's had to leave. So we'll just move through those two as being publicly available. Question four, councillor Haggerty.
Yeah, I'll, thank you for those very detailed answers. I'll move a motion.
What is your motion?
That we write to the federal and state governments, calling for additional services in the growth area, in our growth areas.
Mm-hmm. You secondor?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor.
And I'll throw one more in, that we publish the information that's been provided here in an appropriate format for residents.
We could put it on our webpage.
Yep, just so that, you know, residents know what's supposed to come. And, you know, if we've got any information about when it's coming. I get plenty of questions about, you know, when's there a bus coming to a house near me in Ostril? And they should probably know that.
Mayor, if I can ask the mover and secondor, given that we're going to publish when other governments are going to provide services, will the mover and secondor also publish when council will be providing their parks and everything else that they've made contributions for? Because we do get asked for, when's my park coming? When's the detention basin being built? When are the upgrades happening? That are in council's control. It's good to just have a shot at state and federal, but how about we look at our own backyard as well?
Yeah, that was the intention. When, you know, to a resident, they don't sort of really care whether it's local, state or federal. They want to know, when is this thing being delivered? So let's put it all on there and let's tell them when it's coming. And by publishing that date, it holds council officers to account, which is an important thing. And councillors, and councillors. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is in the name of councillor Chitty.
Thank you, that one done.
So the next item is on page 223, councillor Chitty.
Thanks for the detailed response. Can we get a two-line summary, please?
You want an executive summary?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The next item is in.
Sorry Mayor, if it's possible. Is that possible or?
Oh, I'm sure we can do something, especially for you councillor.
Thank you Mayor.
Okay, so the next item is drainage, yes?
If it's possible for me, then you can.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr Smith.
Thank you.
You're going to do the shortened version, aren't you?
Through the CEO, I don't know if I can do a two-minute summary. Primarily, the issue that we have is the land has been rezoned. There's certain land uses that are no longer permissible. Somebody has allegedly constructed a building without the required consent. Previously, those land uses may have been able to be regularised through lodging effectively a retrospective development application or a building information certificate. Now, because they're not permissible in the zone, they can't do that. So there's no provisions within the Eretropolis SEP to do so.
Sorry Mayor, if I.
Yes, go ahead.
What discretion does council have when it either receives a complaint or when it comes to enforcement of those things?
Mr Smith?
Thank you. Through the CEO. So we've outlined that fairly clearly on page 226. So effectively, when we get a complaint under the enforcement So effectively, when we get a complaint under the enforcement policy or the enforcement standard, I think it's now known, um, we are required to investigate that matter. Um, a- as a result of that matter, if we come to the conclusion that, um, there is an alleged contravention of a planning instrument or consent was required and it wasn't applied for, we will issue a notice of proposed order. That gives procedural fairness to the person to actually, um, explain to us why they believe they haven't done the right, the right or the wrong thing. Uh, we consider that. And then at the end of the day, an order is issued if, in council's opinion, it needed consent and it didn't get one. It is then up to the proponent to determine whether or not they can regularise that through a retrospective DA. In some instances, they can, uh, or through a building information certificate.
So did you get your shortened version? Okay, thank you very much, Mr Smith. Next item's drainage in the name of councillor Chitty on page 20, 227. Okay, councillor Rhodes, you're on page 229 and.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I particularly thank the council for, um, getting back to me with the answers to these questions. Um, I'd like to move a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, what is your motion?
The motion is that the Moorbank Intermodal Special Rates Provision be, uh, collected into a special, um, account reserve, um, uh, just for, uh, so that we've got an open transparent of what, what is happening to that money and how it is being spent.
Thank you. If you had a second.
Yes, Mayor.
Councillor Chitty?
Just a question?
Yes, councillor.
Is there any difficulties in doing that accounting-wise, legal-wise? Um, I obviously don't want to put up an illegal motion. Just want to make sure that there are no issues with that.
Mr Hampurus?
Through the CEO, um, there's no difficulties from an accounting perspective. Um, we've done that similarly for, um, a number of other matters, um, creating internal reserves. But, um, uh, councillors should be mindful that creating a number of reserves dilutes the flexibility we have on our general reserve funds. Um, but notwithstanding that, um, it's, it's, it's ultimately up to council if they want to create a special reserve, um, internal reserve for that matter.
And, um, just a follow-up question. In regards to this money, there are, I guess, cat, there's conditions on what it can be spent on and, you know, no?
Councillor, that's currently stands, there are no conditions attached to it.
Thank you.
This is purely an amount of money that they have decided to give us without any ties to it and it's not compulsory and not legally do they have to pay it.
Just, just a question for you, Madam Mayor. The, the money that goes into the general reserve, wherever it comes from, it is identified where it came from, correct? So you can always trace it and?
Yep.
Okay.
Income is traced.
Any funds good, so, so really there's no need to general, to establish a special place where the money should go to? Someone can tell me, is there must or no?
Go ahead, CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, it's, it's discretionary. There are advantages and disadvantages, as Mr Hampurus has pointed out.
But you are correct, councillor, all our income is traced. Okay, we have a mover with councillor Rhodes, we've seconded.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chitty. Uh, anybody wish to speak against the motion? Okay, those in favour? Those against, declared lost. Next item? Okay, two people through division, but I'll let it go. Those in favour of councillor Rhodes's, um, motion, please stand. Those against? It's fine. You're making me stand up. It's lost, thank you. The next item is on, uh, page 231, councillor Rhodes. It's coming, it looks.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I thank council once again for their report. Um, I feel that this was necessary to have tabled on the council, on the council agenda. There have been questions and people's confusion about what they can and cannot do uh, on these particular, in these particular circumstances in the new release areas. And, uh, I appreciate those, uh, those answers and, uh, and being able to forward those information through to those people who have been making inquiries as to why things are as they are. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, councillor. Um, the next item is in the name of councillor Haggerty and it's mice, but I understand that that will be voted at the next meeting unless you will become.
Yeah, look, I was trying to think of a bad pun, I couldn't. Um, but, uh, yeah, self-explanatory, I'll wait for next month.
Okay. Next one towards zero is in your name.
Uh, same, um, would just like some, just like to make sure that the views of the community are heard in regards to the 30-kilometre zone. I've had some very strident views made clear to me. Uh, I'd just like to make sure that they're included in any assessment of this trial.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Ayard, the next item's in your name.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy for a response to come forward in the council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, councillors. Next item on the agenda are confidential items. We have one item we will be doing in closed session. Are there any other items people wish to pull out?
Madam Mayor?
Confro three, yep. Any other item? All right, okay then, confro one.
Happy to move that way, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declared carried.
Can I be recorded as voting against, Mayor, please?
Yes, certainly, councillor. Yes, it is.
Recorded to be voted against.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask a question about this?
Certainly.
On page, uh, 969 in the conf book, number one says, I just want to know how much money is in those, oh, sorry, I don't know how much information I can actually say.
No, be very careful.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's actually been formally carried. May I make a suggestion that they take that on notice and get back to you?
Okay, yep.
And that way it'll satisfy everybody. Thank you. The next item's, um, item 974.
Move that way.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it councillor Haggerty and seconded by councillor Rhodes. I'll put it those in favour, those against, declared carried. Next item is on page 1168 of your addendum booklet. Thank you, councillor Hall. Seconded?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Any opposition?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just.
Yes.
One question, sorry. If I may, apologies for.
You wish to vote on it, do you, councillor?
Just.
Yes, go ahead, Mr Smith.
The, the recommendation was actually seeking in point, uh, four for council to determine whether or not, uh, to prepare a planning proposal. So a decision is needed from council in relation to that matter.
So you wish to know whether we want that or not?
Correct, Madam Mayor. And through the CEO, the confro seven from the 16th of December council meeting, the recommendation from staff at that meeting was to prepare a planning proposal, but council deferred it while this report was considered.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, uh, a, a decision on that matter would be appreciated.
Well, I'll ask councillor Hall and councillor Rhodes, um, which way they're bending.
Happy to include that.
So you're including, you're including a planning proposal? Yes, okay. Councillor Rhodes, are you happy with that?
Happy.
Any opposition?
Yeah, I'll be voting against.
Yeah, okay. Those in favour, those against, noting councillor Chitty voting against. The next item's on page 1193. It's basically saying, receive a note, the report, and receive a further report.
Um, I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ayard. Seconded?
Yeah, I'll second it, thanks, Madam Mayor.
I've got councillor Hall, you've beaten to the punch, councillor Shelton. Any opposition?
Yeah, can I speak against further reports and strategies and everything else?
Yes, well, can we have a speaker for first, just by, just? Yes, councillor Haggerty, you're speaking for?
I am for.
Okay.
Um, because, um, yeah, there's a report coming, but I would like to see in that future report some hard decisions and actions and timeframes. Uh, I don't want to report with words, I want to report with, you know, s- s- what is it? Short, measurable, actionable goals, smart goals, please.
Okay. That was sort of a foot and edge camp, but we'll take it as a, you're moving. Councillor Rhodes, you've still got your, thank you. Councillor Chitty, did you wish to speak now?
Depends on what the response is going to be to what councillor Haggerty just said about this report that comes back in not too far away.
Oh, yep, okay. Mel through the CEO, I'll ask for the appropriate stuff.
Thank you, councillors. I can assure you, the whole purpose of the, the future report is to provide the metrics, the targets, the smart targets, um, that you've talked about. Um, that's the whole purpose of bringing forward that, that more detailed report.
So, sorry, through you, Mayor. So in July, we'll be then saying, in August, the domestic waste pickups will go from eight weeks to two weeks. Is that the type of stuff we should look forward? And we'll have another waste truck with some more people to service our growing area. And the money that we've currently got in reserves will actually be putting, putting to use and using it to collect rubbish instead of collecting pretty much no interest.
We'll not take those as specific commitments, councillor, but I'll ask Mr Diplos to refer in a general basis.
Yeah, thank you, through the CEO. So yes, um, as, as CEO suggested, it's, we're not going to go for those specific ones, but we'll be putting forward a recommendation of where we can spend this money.
One further question if I can, Mayor?
Yes, certainly.
How does June sound instead of July?
So the 10 year, the 10 year strategy needs, as you could appreciate, councillor, quite a lot of work. It, uh, there is a 20-year strategy from the state government that impacts this as well. So we can try, but I can't give you a guarantee here today.
Question?
Yes, councillor Haggerty?
When does that state strategy, has that state strategy come out yet? The state 21?
Uh, could have to take that on notice on this 10-page list where when that's coming.
I think the term is imminent.
Oh, imminent, one of my favourite terms.
Okay, I think we've all got the gist. I'm going to put it those in favour, those against, declared carried. We now will go into closed session under section 10A2DI. And members of the public will be asked to leave. Thank you. If you could just put up the first one so I could read it. The council accepts the tender from the Stasi Group and the tender ST20904 licensing pump house, Big Park, for a five-years term and commercial outlined in the body of the report, makes public its decision regarding tender ST2904 licensing a public pump house cafe, Big Street, Liverpool. Notes, the chief executive officer will finalise all details and sign the letter of acceptance and delegate to, for the licence to be executed under the power of attorney following the publication of the draft initiative council's website for the tender, giving it contractual effect in accordance with delegated authority. Keeps confidential the details supplied in this report containing information on submissions received pursuant to provisions of section 10A2DI of the Local Government Act 1993 as contained commercial information of confidential nature that would, if disclosed, prejudice the commercial position of the person who supplied it. And the second item was a rescission motion which failed. Thank you very much, everybody. I declare the meeting closed.